I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited and just.
Welcome, everybody, to, we're beginning with the organizational meeting of the village in which we're going to do part of it. We're not going to go through every single piece of this tonight. We'll finish it at our next meeting. So, do I have a motion to open the, to open the organizational meeting?
It's moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we begin with swearing in of Justice Kyle McGovern, who will then swear in me and three other trustees.
And the three trustees.
Yes.
Do you, Kyle McGovern, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States?
Yes.
Support the Constitution of the state of New York?
Yes.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of village justice according to the best of your abilities?
I will. Thank you, Drew.
Please raise your right hand.
Do you, Drew Fixell, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States?
I will.
Support the Constitution of the state of New York?
I shall.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of mayor according to the best of your ability?
I shall.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand. Do you, Thomas D. Butler, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States?
I do.
Will support the Constitution of the state of New York?
I shall.
Will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of village trustee according to the best of your ability?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
You can call me Rebecca.
Rebecca, please raise your right hand. Do you, Rebecca McGovern, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States?
Yes, sir.
You will support the Constitution of the state of New York?
Yes.
And you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of village trustee according to the best of your ability?
Yes.
Congratulations. Do you, Doug Lozolo, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States?
I will.
You will support the Constitution of the state of New York?
Yes, I will.
And you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of village trustee according to the best of your ability?
I will.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, next, is my appointment of Deputy Mayor, Thomas Butler.
Thank you, Mayor.
I don't, we don't have a resolution, right? Just an appointment?
Yes.
Okay, you're appointed. Now, we have reappointment of marriage officers. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the village of Tarrytown does hereby reappoint the following village officials as marriage officers for the village of Tarrytown for a term to expire in December of 2020. Trustees Brown, Butler, Hoyt, McGovern, Rinaldi, and Zolo, and the village clerk, Carol Booth. Got a motion?
It's moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
I guess everybody has to vote on themselves, right?
A bit upstate for the village clerk.
Okay. Reappointment of the deputy village administrator. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the very village of Tarrytown does hereby reappoint James J. Hart as deputy village administrator for a term to expire in December of 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reappointment of deputy village clerk. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the village of Tarrytown does hereby reappoint James J. Hart as deputy village clerk for a term to expire in December of 2020.
It's all moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reappointment of the, of the village registrar of vital statistics. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the village of Tarrytown does hereby reappoint Carol A. Booth as village registrar of vital statistics for a term to expire in December of 2020. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reappointment of deputy village, deputy village registrar of vital statistics. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the village of Tarrytown does hereby reappoint James J. Hart as deputy village registrar of vital statistics for a term to expire in December of 2020.
Second.
All in favor? Reappointment of deputy village treasurer. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the village of Tarrytown does hereby reappoint Antoinette Morales as deputy village treasurer for a term to expire in December of 2020.
It's all moved, Mr. Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reappointment of the village attorney. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the village of Tarrytown does hereby reappoint the firm of Silverberg Zalantis, LLP, as village attorneys for a term to expire in December of 2020.
It's LLC.
Oh, said LLC. I was reading LLC. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Reappointment of village special prosecutor. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the village of Tarrytown here, does hereby reappoint Stephen Betman as village special prosecutor, as a contractor, not an employee, for a term to expire in December of 2020.
It's all moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reappointment of village acting justice. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the village of Tarrytown does hereby reappoint George La Batzos, I think I said it correctly, as village acting justice for a term to expire in December of 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reappointment of the harbor master. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the village of Tarrytown does hereby reappoint Kevin Lustig as harbor master for a term to expire in December of 2020.
It's all moved, Mr. Mayor. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reappointment of village historian. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the village of Tarrytown does hereby reappoint Richard Rose as village historian for a term to expire in December of 2020.
It's all moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And reappointment of police surgeons. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the village of Tarrytown does hereby reappoint Dr. Robert Rainiolo, Industrial Medicine Associates, and Dr. Eric Zitzman as police surgeons for a term to expire in December of 2020.
It's all moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, then we're going to skip over a bunch of them and go to the designation of the official village depositories and authorized check signatures. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the village of Tarrytown hereby designates that the JP Morgan Chase Bank, Wells Fargo Bank, Bank of America, Citibank Key Bank, and the Westchester Bank be designated as official depositories for the village of Tarrytown. All checks drawn on the payroll shall be signed by village treasurer James J. Hart, and all checks drawn on accounts other than payroll funds shall be signed by Mayor Fixell and village treasurer James J. Hart. The signature, the signature of Mayor Fixell may be manual or by an automatic signing device. Deputy mayor is authorized to sign in the absence or unavailability of Mayor Fixell, and deputy treasurer Antoinette Morales is authorized to sign in the absence or unavailability of the treasurer.
It's all moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Designation of an official newspaper. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the village of Tarrytown does hereby designates the Journal News as the official newspaper of the village of Tarrytown.
It's all moved.
All in favor? And reappointment of the auditors. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the village of Tarrytown does hereby reappoint Noraki and Smith Accounting Firm as official auditors for the village of Tarrytown per their proposal dated January 17th, 2017. Second?
Second.
All in favor? And, we are now, we will adopt the village of Tarrytown Board of Trustees official rules of procedures. They are very long, and I'm not going to read them, but they will be attached to the minutes of this meeting. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the village of Tarrytown pursuant to New York State law, Section 4, 412.2, hereby designates the following official rules of procedure as attached to the minutes of this meeting. Said rules of procedure also are subject to other provisions of New York law and the village of Tarrytown code and shall govern the meetings of the Board of Trustees of the village of Tarrytown. Second? All in favor? And there are no changes from the past. And I think that's it for today. And then we will continue at our next meeting. Oh, we should do the, the fund balance. Oh, no, no, we're going to wait on that.
Well, fund balance policy is just a renewal.
Okay, all right, we'll do the fund balance policy. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the village of Tarrytown does hereby readopt the fund balance policy to maintain unrestricted fund balance in a range between 15% and 25%, and that it should not go below 10%, except for emergencies or other extending cir, extenuating circumstances. And be it further resolved that if the village realized an unrestricted fund balance in excess of 25% at the end of any fiscal year, the village would utilize these funds for proper uses such as capital expenses, reduction or avoidance of debt, or establishment of a reserve for defined long-term financial exposure. Got a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I will take a motion to adjourn to the regular meeting.
Make that motion, Senator?
All in favor? Okay. On to the more exciting part of the meeting. There are no changes or additions to the agenda, I don't believe, other than to say we are going to probably continue at least one of these public hearings. Richard, I have a report.
The main report is, in preparing for the storm this week, or this weekend, the DPW sent in extra crews over the weekend. We had crews here on Saturday and Sunday to remove leaves, and we actually got ahead of the game quite a bit. We asked everybody to cooperate and pull the leaves back off the street to reduce risk or hazard from people getting, having difficulty stopping in wet leaves in snow and ice. So, the storm has, has turned out to be not as severe as everybody expected, but the Public Works Department was prepared and everything moving ahead normally.
It is supposed to get very cold tonight, or cold, below freezing.
It's supposed to go down to 27 degrees.
Everybody should be very careful about black ice in the morning, I would say.
Exactly right.
Or leaving here could be outside. Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board. Oh, sure? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Oh, I skipped right over them.
That's okay. No, I just want to make sure everybody knows about this coming weekend. We have the TASH Holiday Market and the village of Tarrytown Tree Lighting.
That's right.
It's a festival on Saturday, December 7th, 2:00 to 5:30. The tree lighting with our brand-new lit tree, which has been, it's incredible. I encourage everybody to go out and see it. Every branch has got something on it, and it's beautiful. We'll be at 5:00 PM. You can come early, at 2 o'clock, and have your picture taken with Santa. 2:00 to 4:45, and then we'll light the tree. There's going to be 40 vendors, food, crafts, gifts, everything that will be there during that time slot as well with TASH, thank you very much. And there'll be some holiday music and some family activities. We're going to do a, are we doing the snow globe?
Uh, that's a good question. Have we reserved that yet?
Yeah, we're doing the snow globe?
Just moving ahead, we are.
This is a snow globe that you can climb inside of, okay?
And take photos of.
Take your picture taking.
Exactly.
Are we doing the samours?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yes.
We're going to have fire pits where you can have samours by our firemen. So, it's going, it's going to be nice. It's going to be a lot going on, so come and join us, all right?
Rebecca, you said Santa's coming at what time?
He's coming, it's 2:00 to 4:45.
Oh, 2:00 to 4:45.
Santa will be out in the daytime. He's busy that night, as you know.
Right.
Got to get back to the North Pole.
And the market, the market also.
Is that the same time?
The market's the same time, yes.
All right, yes, okay. I thought you said, I thought you said 2:00 to 4:45.
You can have lunch, you can have a snack, you can do dinner.
Yep.
You can have Santa, you can sit in a snow globe and have a samur and go home.
The market was really lovely last year.
Photos, photos with Santa and Sharp at 4:45, so we, everybody can be ready for the tree lighting.
And I think it's stand in front of the snow globe. I don't think it's going.
I think it's actually going.
I think you walked through it.
I'm not sure. I don't know.
I don't even know what it is, but that's.
Well, now you have to come.
Actually, you know what?
It's going to be a lot of fun.
You know what, I'll also throw out there, we had a very successful turkey trot this year. We were up to 110 participants.
That's right, we had a good time.
Even though it was a rainy, cold, miserable day, Josh was able to run. I had to forego, forego it this year because I was at 100%. But we had a good turnout, everybody had a good time, went home and took a nice hot shower and warmed up. But it was, it was nice to see everybody participate. We gave turkeys away to the
We did.
20 top finishers in their groups, and I think the, the fast, Josh, what was the fastest finisher?
Like 17:30 or 18:00?
It was like 17 and a half minutes for a
That guy was way out.
Three mile, yeah, for a three-mile run, so he was moving.
He was, oh my goodness.
So.
Anyways, okay, thanks, everybody.
Yep, all right, thank you.
Sorry about that, Becky. Anybody else while we're on the?
One thing, I just want to thank the Tarrytown PBA, especially PBA President Sergeant Dennis Smith for the invite to their senior breakfast that they do annually. It was a great turnout, our, excuse me, I'm not feeling well. Our police department did a great job, as always. So, again, thank you very much to Sergeant Smith and our Tarrytown Police Department for them and the annual breakfast that they throw every year for the seniors, so thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Yes, I'd like to take a minute, since we're talking about the holiday market, to say a big, big thank you to the leaders of TASH. They ended their regular market a couple of weeks ago, and I think we could all agree that the market has just become a really integral part of Tarrytown and Sleepy Hollow. And I want to thank Suzanne, and Tammy, and Linda, and Rachel, and all of the people and all of the vendors who every weekend made it a wonderful shopping experience for the village and its visitors.
It's a great market. Okay, excuse me. Now, opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items, although, well, there are some. There are agenda items other than public hearings. Public hearings are sort of separate, but on any of the other agenda items, anybody wishes to speak? If not, okay. I will move on to the first public hearing. Resident recreation parking permits, which is basically to codify the resident recreation parking permits and change the date.
It changes, it changes the date, and it also allows recreation to issue them.
Right, and the record, to buy, to be given, they're not sold, they're free.
They're free, but to be issued by the rec.
Right, and which everybody should know, if you don't know, if you're watching on TV, that in order to park at Lot E and in the other lots down by the waterfront after 2 o'clock for free, Lot E is restricted for only four hours at a time, which is by the rec building. You have to get a recreation permit, but it's at no cost. You just have to demonstrate that you are a Tarrytown resident, you live here. So, for Tarrytown residents, you can park for free. It doesn't allow you to park for free in the commuter lots between 6:00 and 2:00 PM. But after 2:00 PM, if you're a resident, you can park for free, so.
When will this start up, so the people who have their permits right now? Will they have to start this December, or will it be next?
We would probably have a longer year.
Okay, so they're going to do it next December, they'll, okay.
So, it's good until?
December 20?
Right, now, it's good until May 31st.
May 31st. The one you have now is good to have May 31st.
Yeah, so for, we'd have a rollover for one year. The, the question is, does the board want to do a shorter year or a longer year? We could do a year and a half, or just a six-month permit.
Do we have to do a longer?
Which is fine, we're fine either way.
Okay, thank you.
So, the current permits are out there, they expire May 31st.
The first, right.
So, once the new ones are issued in June, we could only do it, we could either only do it for six months, or we could do it for 18 months.
Okay.
Either way, either way is fine.
Okay. I got, you're right, you're right, you're right, okay. Okay. Got a motion to open the public hearing on the resident recreation permits? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would anybody like to speak about it? If not, I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
It's all moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, resolution. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the village of Tarrytown does hereby approve an amendment to the village code of the village of Tarrytown, Chapter 29146, Recreation Parking Permits, to authorize issuance of resident recreation permits which will expire on December 31 of each year. Whereas a public hearing was held for, for the proposed action on December 2nd, 2019, and whereas a notice of public hearing was published in the Journal News on November 22nd, 2019, and now therefore be it resolved as follows. In accordance with Article 8 of the State Environmental Conservation Law and 6 NYCRR, Part 617, including without limitations, criteria set forth in 6 NYCRR, Part 617.7C, and based upon review of the proposed action, the village Board of Trustees hereby determines that the proposed action will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and hereby adopts a negative declaration. And now therefore, for be it further resolved, the Board of Trustees of the village of Tarrytown does hereby adopt Local Law Number 12 of 2019.
It's all moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have a public hearing on the keeping of chickens. Got a motion to open the public hearing?
It's all moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
I imagine that there are some people who wish to speak, or no?
No.
You don't, I mean, the
I just, really quickly.
You should, you should just, yeah, and identify yourself, sorry.
We gather the signatures, the signatures, and just want to let you know that it was wide public support. People are really into it, and we thank you for taking up this idea to allow us to have chickens. I think a lot of, I know a lot of the towns around us allow chickens now, so hopefully.
It's starting to be more widespread, but, and some are just doing it, I think, without laws, but we're good. Okay, anybody else wish to speak? Dean?
Yeah, I am Dean Gally, 28 Willey Street, and co-chair of the Environmental Council for Tarrytown. We were just looking at the proposed ordinance as it's written, and I just, we had a few concerns. Just wanted to address. One was the setback requirements are apparently going to be going according to current zoning, and setback requirements for, for a coop that are specified. The, some, some lots are so narrow that any, building any coop at all is going to require, huh?
The, but then there's the minimum size, which is 5,000, or we took that out?
We didn't have a minimum setback requirement, it's just in accordance with whatever the
Right.
The setback requirements are.
Oh, we didn't put in the 5,000 square foot?
It's whatever applies in each zone. The maximum square Footage for any coop is 25 square feet.
Yeah, well, uh.
He's talking about R5, which the minimum lot size is 5,000.
Correct.
Yeah, it was for all single-family homes.
Right, no, I was concerned about the fact that, that
So, there'll be a single-family R5?
Yeah. That some, some R2, for example, lots are only 25 feet wide. And if you have a five-foot-wide coop in the middle of a 20-foot-wide thing, you can't, can't really have side yard setbacks that are going to not require a zoning variance.
Can a waiver be?
So.
Well, the way that is written, it's in a separate chapter, so there is no opportunity to go to the zoning board for this. It has to come, so if you don't have the, whatever the required setback is according to the zones, there is no opportunity for a zoning board because it's not in the zoning chapter. It's not, no opportunity for a variance. It's in Chapter 125.
So, so you may have a discrimination issue there with some people not being able to keep chickens because their lots too narrow. But I'm not sure what the intention of the board is.
Yeah, they have a setback, but sometimes the setbacks are
They'd still be able to appeal this minimum set, your setback not being complied with. So, the use, the use is one thing.
No, they have a setback, it's so small, or it's so, it's, it makes it impossible to do, I think is what you're saying.
Five feet, something like that.
Not making a judgment, I'm just asking. In a, in a, in a zone that's small, when the houses are so close to one another, is it good to be, is it the right thing to allow, in such a dense area, to allow chickens? I'm just asking.
Well, I mean, most people
I mean, it's very, very closely neighbors, I'm just asking. I'm just saying, if, if the coop can't fit, maybe, you know, maybe it works, it works for a reason. What's only, what's only right?
The coop would be five by five.
Then why can it fit?
Well, 25 per square feet, however you want to arrange.
Presumably be five by five.
But, but you need enough room to enter and clean the, the beds and stuff like that, so.
How about we?
We need that room whether you're
I, I've suggested, why don't we, if we can pass it and we can look at it? And we could, if we can make, if we need to, we'll, we'll, let us consult.
Right, yeah.
We'll, we'll take a look, and we can modify it if we need to do that.
I just, I still want, I don't want it, want there to be a discrimination issue, that's all.
Right, right.
That some people can, and some people can't.
Well, sometimes it happens.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, sometimes it's not discrimination in the traditional form, but it, sometimes you can't. It's the same as for accessory structure.
They could file a zoning appeal for a setback of an accessory structure.
Yeah, I would think so. I mean, I had to do that when I built a shed, I had to get a
Oh, so you can.
So, you can get a variance, then?
You just have to comply with, with whatever the zoning codes minimum requirements are. For smaller lots, there's smaller setbacks, so in the R5, it's going to be a smaller setback requirement. I don't believe, though, because this is in a separate chapter, that you could appeal this requirement to the zoning board because it's not in the zoning code, the requirement.
Oh, so you, all right, so why don't we, why don't we pass the laws as, we'll take a look at it.
We could put it in the zoning code if you want to make it appealable.
Dean, are you talking about side yard?
We're talking about what, sorry?
Side yard.
Side yard setbacks.
Yeah, the side yard setbacks.
So, if you could do in the backyard, in the backyard, would that be okay?
Well, yeah, but it still has to be within the side yard setbacks, regardless of where it is on the property.
All right, so, so why don't we take, why don't we pass the law? And then we'll take a look at it and see if we can make any modification that'll make sense, all right? I mean, nobody, this is the first time it came up, so, so instead of postponing this, we can, we can amend it, right? Kathy and Rich, is there any reason that we can't amend this?
I mean, we could, we're adopting it as is, and we could then, if we amend it, we'd have to change.
Right, whatever, we can, yeah, so we'll, we'll take a look at it and try and figure it out and what would make sense. And maybe, maybe there's an easy fix of just making it, you could apply for a waiver in, in those rare instances.
Okay.
She gets into putting it in the zoning chapter, Kathy? Maybe, because, because even though somebody might have a big enough lot, might be in an R40 or any, you never know, their, their lot might be an irregular size, and then they would, they wouldn't be able to fit it in an area where, you know, is appropriate, and so they should be able to go to the zoning board to, to change it, to put it in the right place.
I mean, I think the concern is, you don't want, which, you know, Rich was mentioning, you don't want somebody to be able to appeal the use, right? So, you don't want, there's requirements about dogs and chickens, and you don't want somebody to say, I could have more than the allotted number of dogs, or more than the allotted number of chickens. So, the use is not being appealed, but maybe if you wanted to, if you want the opportunity for somebody to make a application to the zoning board, you can just add language, shall be located to comply with the minimal setback requirements governing accessory buildings as set forth in Chapter 305, unless a variance is obtained, you know, give them the express authority to go to the zoning board if you want to open that up.
But only for the size, not for the use?
Not for the use.
Right.
Because I don't think you want to talk about types of, whatever the requirements are for dogs, or whatever the requirements are for chickens, and you don't want somebody to come in with 50 chickens. You want to say 12 chickens, so.
I got you. So, so, can we make that change, how would we make the change here? Since we're not actually reading the law.
Unless an appeal is obtained from the zoning board.
Unless the zoning board.
Unless a variance is obtained.
If it's an easy, because if it's an easy fix, we could do it. If it's not, we'll wait.
He has some other comments, so I think he has additional comments.
Well, yeah, just, I have a couple other
Okay.
Yeah, we might have to continue.
Well, okay.
That's what a public hearing is for.
Another one is that the, the ordinance doesn't seem to, it doesn't say that there shall be no runoff from the chicken exercise yard area, whatever it is, to adjacent properties. And it seems to me that would be a consideration. I don't know if that's, that has to be in the ordinance, or is that a normal thing that would, that's in a blanket statement regarding
Anything.
Anything having to do with, I mean, they don't have a zero runoff law for properties in general, but for something where you've got chicken manure on the ground, you wouldn't want it, want a runoff going into an adjacent yard for that.
We have a provision that says that you have to keep the yards and pens clean and free of noticeable odors across property lines, but it doesn't have a zero runoff thing because it was, we're limiting the structure only to 25 square feet, so I mean, you keep
Well, but that, that wouldn't necessarily be where the runoff is, is from, it could be from the yard. There's no specification of maximum size for the, for the yard area. The chickens could be running all over a person's backyard and still be within
No, they're not allowed. That's not allowed. They have to be in pens.
Right, but the, is, is there a maximum size of the pen?
It says chickens must be confined at all times to chicken coop and are fenced in enclosure and shall not be permitted to roam freely on any property in the village of Tarrytown. enclosure and shall not be permitted to roam freely on any property in the Village of Tarrytown.
Right, right, but if the pen is the size of the yard.
Right, if you fence off your entire yard, right, then that would be the pen, yes.
Well, that's why we had the pen, the yards and other areas have to be set back from the property line, that was the reason for requiring the coop. The pen, the yards, to have a little bit of a buffer, so if you're giving people the right to.
Okay, so, all right, so the setback requirement applies to the, to the.
Yes, it says all structures used for housing and feeding of chicken, and all exercise yards, pens, and other areas, so everything has to be set back.
All right, all right, I, I.
But if you're now opening the door to let people reduce that setback, then the yards can be right up against the property line, so there's gonna be more chance of runoff.
Right, so, so the thought is, is as long as the setbacks are, are maintained, that there shouldn't be a problem with runoff, because there should be enough ground in between the.
Right, because the board wanted some buffer between any portion of where a chicken could be and the next property line.
Yeah, and I suppose if, if there is runoff that actually occur, occurs, somebody could agree that under the general terms of the ordinance, which says that it shouldn't be a nuisance, that kind of thing. The, the, the last thing is, we were a little concerned that, was there an intention in the ordinance to have a minimum size of yard for chickens to, to run in, because the general sort of recommendations, what you get from, from people that, that know about farm animals, say that you need about ten square feet per chicken in, in order to have them, you know, run, run around in a pen, and there isn't any minimum size of the pen stipulated, let's say, you know, a number of chickens times ten, ten square feet or something. I don't know if that's something that should be in the ordinance, or is that something that's?
Well, that, that may be something that you're recommending, I think from the village's standpoint, we would, and the building department would enforce the provisions of the New York State Agriculture and Markets Law. So there's this, we have specific language in there about the maximum size of a coop, but if there's other provisions in the Ag and Markets Law about the maximums or the required size of a pen, that would also go under consideration as well.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if what you're, I don't know if you're citing rule or law or.
No, no, just, just recommendations.
I mean, there is no minimum lot size here, so if somebody could potentially have a non-conforming lot in the smallest, you know, the, the R five zoning district, and be able to put a coop there, so right now, under this zoning, there is nothing that says, but you have to have a minimum, minimum lot size of acts, so.
Yeah, we were just concerned about.
That's why the setbacks, I think, were the only control, so.
Well, right, well, are we gonna say something that they have to be kept, you know, humanely in regard to what you, you know, in those rules?
Is that in there?
It's in New York State Agriculture and Markets Law, I don't know to what degree.
Can I add what he's saying, because it's actually my concern, so, I'm Rachel Tiger, also the co-chair of TF, so what I read was, if they, if you only have a coop, like, the, the recommendation is two to three square foot per chicken for the coop, but if you only have a coop with no running space, then, then you need ten, so, so, so ten square feet per chicken if it's an enclosed coop, but, so, I, I think that, my, my concern was if you only had a coop and you're allowing twelve chickens, and you're only allowing twenty-five square feet, I was saying that wasn't.
Do we have, is there a provision that we think there has to be outdoor space besides the coop?
We're not limiting the pen, or the enclosure where the chickens can run around, what we're limiting is just the size of the structure, the coop.
But if someone, but is there a requirement that they have to have a pen?
No.
That's what you're, that's your.
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me, you're, you're limiting it, but you're not stipulating a minimum size, you're limiting maximum size, you're not stipulating a minimum size. It seems to me that, that you ought to have an area either within or outside the coop of so many square feet per chicken allowed for the chicken to, to, you know, have a healthy life.
So you're saying there has to be a, a pen of ten square feet per chicken?
Well, either, either, yeah.
Why don't we, why don't we continue the public hearing, we'll continue and take a look.
But, you know, we, we.
No, this is your first shot at it, so.
Kathy, can you find for us the New York State rules about, about what they say about chicken keeping so far?
Dean, you should submit your questions to the board.
Yeah.
We'll take it up in the next meeting.
All right, so.
Okay.
I will take a motion to continue the.
So that motion, second.
All in favor?
Cluck, cluck.
Okay, thanks, sorry, I thought we were gonna do it, but, it'll be on the next agenda, and hopefully we'll get these questions straight, which I think they're good questions, actually, and I'm not, and we'll hopefully clean it up, and.
Well, do they have other questions?
No, I, you wanna?
I mean, I, I don't have a question per se, but I just wanted to, Michael, Michael came up and just voiced his support, and I too also want to voice my support, and thank you for taking up this issue and not just shutting it down, because I, I don't have any chickens, but I've been the beneficiary of experiencing the joys of chickens, and I think this is something that our village can, if managed correctly, and it seems like you guys are doing a very nice job of going through, being very thorough, but also giving it some flexibility, too, because our community is very diverse and unique in terms of lot sizes and, and everything, and it seems like you're trying to create an opportunity for everybody to have the opportunity, so thank you so much for bringing this up, or taking it up, and I just know for every person here, there's so many people that are really enthusiastic about chickens and our city.
We definitely know that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, okay. Um, next item. The Architecture Review Board Requirements, which we are going to continue the, this public hearing, but I'll take a motion to open the public hearing on Architecture Review Board requirements modifications.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nobody's here, I assume, on ARB requirements, so I'm gonna take a motion to continue the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And now, other order of business. Replacement vehicle for the Superintendent of Public Works. Be resolved that the current vehicle that has been used by the General Foreman of the Department of Public Works is in need of replacement, and the superintendent's vehicle will rotate down to the General Foreman, and in turn, a new vehicle is required for the Superintendent of Public Works. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Tarrytown does hereby authorize a purchase of a 2020 Ford Interceptor Hybrid, all-wheel-drive with 3.3 L ATV V-six engine, administrative vehicle with emergency lighting, off the Westchester County Government contract for municipal subdivisions, contract number RFBWC nineteen zero two three, from buyer Ford of Morristown, New Jersey, for the Superintendent of Public Works, for a total approximate bid price of thirty-six thousand, six hundred and six dollars, and be it further resolved that the Village Administrator has authorized to sign the necessary documents for this purchase, and the Village anticipates that the funds for the purchase will either be from operating funds, appropriation of surplus, or the future, future issuance of debt.
So moved, Mr. Mayor, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, marriage officer appointment. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Tarrytown does hereby appoint Kyle Booth as a marriage officer for the Village of Tarrytown for one day, December fourteenth, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Mayor, I'm gonna recuse myself.
I had a feeling about that. Change order to shoreline stabilization contract, whereas during storms over the past several years, there has been continuing erosion and loss of shoreline at the end of West Main Street, west of the Riverwalk, along the stormwater drainage outfalls entering into the Hudson River, and whereas in order to maintain and restore this area, using larger stone and trap rock, the Village Engineer requested a quantity change order from R Puni and Sons, which is doing the shoreline stabilization work under an awarded contract at LoSi Park in order to do this work, and whereas the Village received a proposal from R Puni and Sons to perform the overlooked shoreline repairs at Hudson Harbor for a lump sum price of forty-eight thousand dollars, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Tarrytown does hereby award the change order to shoreline stabilization contract to R Puni and Sons, per their quantity change order proposal of forty-eight thousand dollars, and be it further resolved that the Village Administrator is hereby authorized and directed to execute this quantity change order with R Puni and Sons, and the Village anticipates that the funds for the purchase will either be from operating funds, appropriation of surplus, or the future issuance of debt.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
The YMCA arrears penalty. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Tarrytown does hereby reduce the outstanding penalty for the Tarrytown family YMCA from sixteen thousand, one ninety-five and fifty-three cents to eight thousand, ninety-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents, provided that the outstanding balance of sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and five cents, plus the unbilled amount due for November two thousand nineteen, are resolved and paid in full to the Village of Tarrytown on or before the end of business on December sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, subject to an admission agreement that shall be to the satisfaction of the Village Attorney and signed by the Village Administrator.
So moved.
All in favor? Approval of a water rate increase, whereas since the Village of Tarrytown has not had a water increase, water rate increase in over a year, but has experienced increases in cost of water from New York City, as well as increases in other operating expenses for the Water Department, and whereas, since New York City raised their water rates by approximately nine point two percent in two thousand nineteen, and the Village budgeted other cost increases for the Water Fund, including salaries and benefits at an increased rate of approximately two point five percent, and whereas the blended rate of these interest rates amounts to a four point seventy-seven percent increase in water rates to be charged to the Tarrytown Water System consumers, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Tarrytown hereby enacts a four point seven seven percent increase in water rates to be charged to the Tarrytown Water System consumers, increasing the rate from eighty dollars and forty-five cents per one thousand cubic feet to eighty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents per one thousand cubic feet, and be it further resolved, the Village Administrator and the Village Treasurer are directed to take the necessary and appropriate actions to begin charging this new rate with the billing cycle effective December one, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Another good reason for conservation.
Yes.
Exactly right.
And the minutes. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held on November eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Tarrytown does hereby approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees held on November fourth, two thousand nineteen, as submitted by the Village Clerk.
Second.
Second? All in favor? And the vouchers. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Tarrytown does hereby approve abstract number ten of audited vouchers in the total amount of one hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and four dollars and nineteen cents, as presented by the Village Treasurer. The motion.
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes, this is about the smallest vouchers we've ever seen.
Yeah, really.
Yeah. And, opportunity for the public to address the boards on items not included in the agenda? Dean?
Again, Dean Galley, twenty-eight Willy Street. We continue to see the crosswalk signs on Cortlandt Street at Willy, and also in front of, at the end of Main Street, inoperative or, or bagged by, by the state and not operative, not in operation at all, and we really feel like these, this problem needs to be resolved, this is a very busy crossing area, I myself have seen several close calls, people not knowing when to cross Willy or, or Cortlandt down, down by the McDonald's, just, just on my way here, there were people crossing Willy from McDonald's over to, toward Sleepy Hollow, and they were crossing against what a crosswalks, crosswalk sign would have said, it would have said, don't walk, because the light was just about ready to turn red, turn green for Willy, and this car zoomed by me on the right and narrowly missed the people crossing the street. Those, those crosswalk signs need to be put into operation, and we have no idea why the state hasn't done it, and then, of course, the one's over.
Well, we do know, we did meet with them.
Well, okay.
A month ago?
Yeah.
No, in, in response to, you know, your complaints and the response to it not being done for all this time.
Right.
And there is a problem they're trying to resolve with regard to the property lines, and who owns what, which was tying them up.
And that's still, I, I think it's not a hundred percent resolved.
But we will follow up with them again, we have to keep on following up with them.
Okay, so, so it's on our front burner with, with the village?
Yeah, we, we had a long meeting with, with the consultants on the project.
Isn't one of those corner Sleepy Hollow?
No.
No, it's actually, it's, it leads to Sleepy Hollow.
Is it both Tarrytown, okay.
I mean, I thought it was all within Tarrytown.
Yeah, yeah, it's all, but no, it's not the, it's not the village lines, it's the ownership of where the poles go, and.
Correct.
It was, it was hard to believe that there was a question.
The main issue really lies over on the southwest corner, on the bakery property.
Right.
And we also asked them to look at, aside, in, in, instead of just replacing them with simple walk, don't walk, the way they are everywhere else around here, is that both that, both of those intersections really require something smarter, and perhaps better, because the, the issue of vehicles turning is not really resolved by the normal crosswalks.
Right, right.
So we had a whole long discussion with them about trying to figure out a way to[1649.91]